Good evening, and welcome to the February 16th, 2010 San Bruno Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call of all stars, please.
Commissioner Samut.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Chair Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
All right. Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Thank you. The first item is going to be approval of the minutes of January 19th, 2010.
I move that we, through the chair, I move that we approve the minutes of January 19th, 2010.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, the minutes do pass. Next item would be Communications.
Just the usual, that you, that people watching at home can find the Planning Commission packets under the Planning Commission section in Community Development portion of the website. All the staff reports are there, as well as an agenda. I'd also like to welcome Vice Mayor Rico Medina to the meeting. He is our council liaison, and he is here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, is there, next item actually would be public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If there's anybody here present that would like to speak on an item that not, that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close that. Next item would be Conflict of Interest. Does any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items that are before us? Seeing none, we will close that, and go on to public hearing. All right, the first item is, okay, adjacent to 1736 Niles Avenue. It's a request for a conditional use permit to install a wireless telecommunications facility within a residential zoning district on a joint utility pole in the public right-of-way per sections 12, 220, and 12.84, .160 of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to construct a wireless facility within the public right-of-way. The specific site is located within the public right-of-way on an existing utility pole adjacent to 1736 Niles Avenue. The applicant is proposing to install a seven-foot wood riser, and three antennas would be placed on top of that wood riser. A radome would enclose those antennas. And a radome is a structure that will act as an enclosure for the antennas, and would protect it from different elements such as weather, and would also serve as a screen thereby limiting the antenna view from the public right-of-way. Additionally, four equipment cabinets would be installed on a metal pole that would sit four inches from the outer edge of the utility pole. The lowest of the, or, equipment cabinets would be seven feet from the ground level, and the highest would be 16 feet, nine inches. The total height of the cellular facility would be 49 feet, 11 inches. The project was heard at the November Architectural Review Committee meeting, and at that meeting the committee forwarded the project onto the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation, however did express some concern regarding the stealth aspect of the proposal. At the December Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission continued the item to a future meeting and requested additional information of the applicant. There were six things that were requested. The first was photographs for similar sites. Those are attached as Exhibit G within your staff report. The second was a noise study. The Commission really wanted a noise study conducted here to determine whether the equipment cabinets would be meeting the noise regulations within the municipal code. The municipal code allows equipment within a residential area to be up to 55 decibels, and the noise study submitted has taken five feet from where the equipment cabinets would be, registered 49.7 decibels. Therefore, it is meeting the noise regulations found within the municipal code. Thirdly, the Commission asked for alternative site analysis. It is important to note, when the project was originally submitted, three sites were analyzed. Those were Parkside Intermediate School, Cunningham Water Tank, and St. Roberts Church. The Parkside Intermediate School would cover the gap in coverage, however, the applicant has indicated that a new tree pole, or flagpole, would have to be constructed, and larger equipment cabinets would have to be utilized. Additionally, the applicant has noted that it is against T-Mobile's policy to locate on elementary and intermediate school campuses due to potential public opposition. Regarding the Cunningham Water Tank site, coverage to the target area would be reduced by 50 percent, therefore that site was not selected. And finally, St. Roberts did not want to enter into a lease agreement. Since the December Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has analyzed three additional sites as requested by the Commission. Those sites are San Bruno City Park, the Walgreens located on the corner of El Camino Real and Crystal Springs Road, and the San Bruno Senior Center. A baseball park light was analyzed at San Bruno City Park, and it was, it would reduce coverage to the target area by 66 percent, therefore it was not selected for this project. Additionally, the Walgreens site would not cover any of the target coverage area, therefore it was not selected. And lastly, the San Bruno Senior Center, a utility pole was analyzed within the public right-of-way, however, coverage to the target coverage area would be reduced by 66 percent, therefore it was not selected. The Commission also asked the applicant to identify the difference between the T-Mobile website maps and the maps that are submitted within your staff report here today. And the applicant has included a detailed summary of that, which is included as Exhibit G within your staff report. Also, the Commission asked how often the sites would be maintained. The applicant has indicated that off-site computer systems, right now, would only, the T-Mobile sites would only be visited in the case of emergency, or if the computer system stayed that some of the equipment cabinets were not being utilized in a proper function. Also, all T-Mobile sites are visited once throughout the year to conduct a visual inspection. Lastly, the Commission requested that additional outreach to the public be conducted. And staff did send an additional courtesy notice to not only property owners, but the immediate tenants of the site, adjacent to the site. No comments were received as of the writing of this report. It is important to note that staff did receive one comment from a concerned neighbor, and when, that was when the original 300-foot notification was sent out for the December 15, or 16th Planning Commission meeting. That neighbor had concerns from a self, from a health and safety perspective. Staff responded that the proposal met federal regulations and is unable to regulate any further due to those specific federal regulations. When analyzing this project, it is important to note that the applicant has identified that coverage in the target area is limited to in-vehicle and on-street coverage. In-building coverage is currently inadequate. The project we force tonight would improve in-building coverage at the target location. From a stealth standpoint, staff does find that the proposal, that the proposal meets stealth definition found within the municipal code. The applicant is installing a radome that would screen the antennas from public view, and additionally, staff has added conditions of approval requiring the radome, metal pole, and equipment cabinets to be painted to match the existing utility pole. Therefore, staff does find that the painted radome, equipment cabinets, and metal pole would blend with the proposed wireless facility in a manner that would render it as minimally visible and unobtrusive as possible. Overall, staff is supportive of the site, and recommends that the Planning Commission approve Use Permit 09-025, based on findings of fact 1 through 6, and conditions of approval 1 through 15. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does any of the commissioners have any questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
Matt, the one part you said about the pole is meets stealth, to all of our requirements. Are you talking about the equipment part of it, or the top of it, or the actual antenna?
Staff finds that all aspects of the proposal would meet the stealth design requirement.
And the staff saw the pictures of the equipment?
Staff did see the-
Did staff go to Burlingame on Peninsula and, Peninsula and wherever the corner is there? And Stanley, and look at an existing pole?
We did, we did not go out to the site specifically, but did analyze the project, the photos that were submitted from the applicant.
And you felt this equipment, the equipment part of it was stealth? Stealth meaning to blend into the environment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff, from the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I received, and I believe other commissioners received, an email communication from the city attorney. A part of that communication appeared to me to be a requirement that we state any ex parte communications on this matter. And, ex parte was, part of the definition appeared to include visits to the site. And I'd like to ask the city attorney to explain, is that, is that the correct level of detail, and when should that statement be made by any commissioner who has made any activity?
Thank you. And just as a reminder, the communication I did send to the Planning Commission would be deemed attorney-client privileged, but with respect to this part of it, I'm happy to speak to it. So, ex parte communications are really just any evidence or information that the Planning Commission members obtain outside of the context of this hearing. So, just as in your typical and normal routine, when you're, for example, reviewing a, an addition to a house, oftentimes you go out there and you look at the site, you talk to a neighbor, you talk to the applicant, and then you come back and you disclose that at the DS. That holds true here. So, the important thing is that the disclosure takes place in adequate time, that the applicant, or any other members of the public during the public hearing, who wish to speak or to, or controvert, or take issue with the information that you've obtained outside of the hearing, that they have an opportunity to speak to that.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Mr. Peterson.
May I take the, as it is opportunity, to reveal my ex parte communications?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. After reading the staff report, I went to the site, actually, I went to the site two or three times, and looked at the telephone poles in the, in the area, in the surrounding area, observed the residences in that area, and I spoke to several residents, one of whom was completely opposed to the idea of this application, and one had, didn't have an opinion one way or the other. In addition, I spoke to a member of the community who appeared at the public hearing on this last time the Commission was in session, and I asked him if he was coming tonight, since he was here before, and asked him about his interests, which, which appeared to be confined to the Parkview area. But he did tell me that they had been negotiating with the vendor, the applicant, and it looked like their objections might go away because of the negotiations, the applicant was going to move their site. In addition, but related to this, I went to the other cell site on tonight's agenda, and made similar inquiries. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask the applicant to please step forward and give us a description and why you think it's necessary.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commissioners. My name's Lisa Coehl. I represent T-Mobile. I'm here tonight-
Speak a little closer to the mic.
I was told not to go too close to the mic.
Okay.
Are you, are you not able to hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I'm here tonight to request approval of the proposed facility. As noted by staff, T-Mobile has a coverage gap in this area of San Bruno, and the proposed facility is designed to meet that need. At this time, I wanted to take the opportunity to go through the alternate site analysis, and how we got to the proposed facility. Next slide. So, this is the proposed facility, and four, five alternate sites were examined. The Cunningham Water Tank, St. Roberts Church, City Park, and the Walgreens. T-Mobile has an existing site here on El Camino Real. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is the Senior Center, where we're at today. Next slide. So, this is the current coverage for this area. As you can see, yellow and gray, gray indicated by on-street coverage, and yellow in-vehicle coverage. The goal of this site is to have green coverage, which is in-building coverage. Next slide. So, this is the proposed coverage for the facility. Next slide. The first site we looked at was Cunningham Way, a new 50-foot pole. Next slide. Here is the coverage of that proposed facility. The site doesn't meet the engineer's coverage requirements. The tank is about .19 miles northwest of the project site. A new pole structure at 50 feet would cover only about 50 percent of the target area. In addition, AT&amp;T Wireless proposed a facility at this location and received extensive public opposition. Also, there is no power at the site on the, the water tank property, so power was to be brought in from, along the access road, at the bottom of the access road, through an easement from the property owners. Fortunately, AT&amp;T was not able to obtain those easements due to the opposition. Next slide. St. Roberts Catholic Church on the corner of Spring Road and Oak Avenue was examined. Unfortunately, the church declined to enter into a lease agreement, so we weren't able to pursue that site. Third site is the City Park. It would be a ballpark light replacement about, at 50 feet. Next slide. So, this is the coverage from that proposed facility. The park is approximately .28 miles southeast of the project site, at an elevation of 68 feet, which is approximately 90 feet lower than the project site, which is like a nine-story building. So, coverage to that area is greatly reduced, and only about a third of the coverage is attained. Next slide. The fourth site was the San Bruno Senior Center. We looked at a joint pole in front of the property, installing antennas at about 50 feet. So, this is the coverage, and also, only about a third of the coverage is attained compared to the proposed facility. The fifth site we looked at was Walgreens on the corner of San Bruno, or, sorry, Crystal Springs and El Camino Real. A new 50-foot pole was proposed. This is the proposed coverage, and again, none of the target area is covered. In addition, this site is located relatively closely to the existing T-Mobile site on, at 197 El Camino Real, and some overlap and interference would also occur. Next slide. So, we also looked at additional joint poles. PG&E has strict requirements on which poles we can locate on. This is a pole that's at the corner of Niles and Cedar Avenue. Poles with multiple crossarms are not, are avoided because it reduces the climbing space. PG&E has to be able to climb this pole for servicing, and it, and so they require a certain amount of free space on the pole. So, locating equipment on this pole would be difficult because PG&E would not have the space needed. In addition, corner poles are avoided because they are more likely to be hit by cars and trucks. Next slide. We also looked at a joint pole in the corner of Niles and Maple. In addition to being on a corner, this pole has a light standard, so we try to avoid poles with, with any appurtenances on them, which includes light, light standards. This was another pole we looked at on Niles, between Maple and Cherry Avenue. This pole can't be used because it has what's called an electrical riser on it, this gray guard, which is, it, the visor is an electrical connection attached to the side of the pole, and it's protected by this U-guard. So, this, we cannot, PG&E will not allow any equipment on a pole that has this. So, this is the current project site. The proposed joint pole candidate was selected for the searchway because it utilizes the smallest equipment available to provide service to the target coverage area. The antennas will be installed on top of the pole at a height of approximately 50 feet, and the profile of the existing pole will be maintained. No new pole structure will be built. The proposed antenna on top of the pole are screened with a cap that encases the antennas, a radome, and thus, they are not visible. The associated equipment will also be installed on the pole, and will be painted to match the color of the existing pole. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And I'm also joined tonight by T-Mobile's RF engineer, Amr Karaba, and Bill Hammett, with Hammett and Edison, who prepared the RF report and the noise study.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant, from the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
I have a couple of questions. One, on the San Bruno Park proposal, one. I believe, in fact, I'm the one that suggested the San Bruno Park, and here you have, on Diamond One, which is, you're right, is far away, and the elevation is way far down. The park that I was, that we suggested was right here, it's, it's probably about 300 yards from where we're standing now, and the elevation's probably 40, 40, 50 feet higher with the same light standards. So, that, that proposal was not included in here. But a couple of the questions I have is, one, I'm looking at how they're getting reduced by 30 percent, 60 percent, and all these different numbers, and it seems like each pole is only covering about three or four square blocks. So, how many more poles are you planning on putting in San Bruno if this is approved? Is my first question. My second question was, have you seen what, any of the poles live? Have you personally seen, like, the one in Burlingame I was talking about?
I have.
I guess I should disclose, I did go visit the site, and I did go down to the Burlingame site and walk that one to look at it.
I have. I've seen both sites.
Okay. Do you, in-
I'm sorry, the Burlingame and Atherton site. I've not seen the San Francisco-
I haven't, I didn't go to San Francisco either, I just saw the Burlingame one. And to be honest, when I was driving around, I had trouble finding the pole. I was kind of pleased that I was having trouble finding the pole, because I thought, maybe this thing really is stealth, and the top of it is stealth, but as soon as I turned the corner and saw the, the power equipment at seven feet high, do you consider that stealth? I know the staff said that they do, but you, as a professional in this industry, do you consider that's the equipment stealth?
This is the, currently the smallest equipment available to install.
I didn't ask that. I said, do you consider this stealth?
Yes.
Okay, you do. Was any thought of putting this underground, the equipment underground?
No.
Okay. Was any thought, was encasing the equipment, so you don't see four different boxes of different sizes and variations, you know, bolted to a pole in, in front of somebody's house?
No.
Okay. And my first question, how many more poles are, is the company planning on, on looking into?
I can have the T-Mobile engineer, Amr, come and speak at this time. I'm not, I, I'm not aware of, of any other facilities besides these two, and the one at Parkview that are proposed.
Okay, I like that, I like that answer, please.
My name is Amr Karaba. I am the RF engineer from T-Mobile. Actually, the, the exact number of the proposed sites for San Bruno, I can't give that number right now, because like, we have several engineers, like, working in the area, and T-Mobile, when, for planning, we have like a three-year plan, five-year plan, and like, this year's plan. So, to get that number, I have to get, for other engineers to get their numbers as well. All I'm aware of is the two sites that we are working on right now.
Well, my concern is, if, am I right that they cover about a four-block radius? Is that, is that fair, is that a fair guess?
Depends on the, on the area and-
On, on this pole here?
Yeah.
You're doing about four-block radius?
Almost like quarter of a mile. That would be the radius.
So, I'm, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a public school, almost dropout, so bear with me here. But if you have a pole on Niles Avenue, and you move that same pole at the same height as a crow flies two blocks south, how does that cut down 60 percent? If you're cutting back over here, you're increasing over here, and, I mean, I, the way I look at it, at a tower, it goes out in a circle, or a square, or whatever shape it is, and if you move it, it just moves a little bit.
Yeah.
So, if it's only covering that much, if you're gonna need poles every eight, if it covers four blocks, you're gonna need a pole every eight blocks?
No, not really. Depends on the elevation. Like, if, if we have our poles, like, on a relatively high elevation, that would, like, get much more radius than a pole like sitting in a valley, or in low elevation, ground level. And the problem with the, like, with that short distance, like, quarter of a mile of a radius, it's mainly because of the frequency that T-Mobile is working at, the 19 megahertz. That frequency would like, whatever the, the antenna sees is what the antenna would cover. Like, it's more of a line of sight. So, if the signal is blocked by buildings, by a hill, like dense trees, the signal will not go any farther. This is not like the, like the radio, the two-way radio, which they are working on much lower frequencies, their signal can, can travel like, much more distance.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, you're the engineer with the company, is that what, that-
With T-Mobile.
Okay. Can this equipment be put underground? Not the antenna part, I understand antenna has to be up high, but my concern is the power equipment, or whatever, those four boxes on the pole that are seven feet height. The top part, to me, is, is actually, looks pretty good for, for a cell site. Could this equipment be put underground?
I think that has to go to the manufacturer, but I don't think so, because these equipment are like radios, and radios, they, like, I think if they were buried in the ground, like, the heating, they will heat up, like, I don't think that will be able to bury this in the ground.
And have you seen this equipment on the field?
Yeah.
And do you consider this stealth?
Yeah.
The, on the definition of stealth?
Yeah.
What do you, what's your definition of stealth?
Stealth is whatever, like, it would match to the, whatever is existing.
So, when you drive by, you probably wouldn't notice it? That's, would that be stealth?
For me, I, I have to notice it, because this is my, my work.
Okay, but the definition of stealth, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be, if you drive by, you probably, the normal person wouldn't notice it there?
Not really, because most of the cabinets, they look like the existing PG&E meter.
I'm not asking about most of the cabinet, I'm asking the definition of stealth, is when you drive by, the normal person probably wouldn't notice it, would that be correct?
If the normal person, he doesn't know this is an, an existing cell site, I don't think he, he will notice that.
That would be considered stealth, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. And you, and you think if a normal person drove by these four boxes in a residential neighborhood that's not really heavily tree-lined, you don't think a, a normal person would, would notice it?
It's, it's different from one person to another, but I, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, through the chair.
Commissioner Samut.
I'm looking at Exhibit Two, I'm trying to compare it to Exhibit Two, of existing coverage and proposed coverage. I'm just trying to understand that the area in, in the existing coverage around the site, it looks as though everything, I guess that would be northwest of the project site, has in-vehicle coverage, and then, kind of southeast of it is on-street coverage. Is that, would that be correct, or somewhat correct? Can you explain to me what the difference is in vehicle coverage and on- Can you explain to me what the difference is in vehicle coverage and on-street coverage is?
Okay. These, we call these thresholds for coverage, and these will come from our link budget. And the link budget, it's mainly a calculation of the required signal level at a certain location to provide the service. And let's say the green, which is the in-building coverage, it assumes that a signal level of NIC seventy-six dBm is enough for the signal to penetrate inside the houses and to provide indoor coverage. The in-vehicle, it assumes that at NIC eighty-four dBm signal level is enough to penetrate inside the car and provide in-vehicle coverage. The on-street is at NIC ninety-one dBm, and this is, like, the minimum or the marginal signal level, like, if you get any more losses due to buildings, to cars, you lose the service.
So, I could have coverage if I'm walking on that street, but if I get into a car that's parked there, I would lose coverage?
Yes, like, in the link budget, like, we have a vehicle loss, it's, like, six dBs. So, the difference in the signal level between the on-street and inside the car is six dBs.
And in terms of this coverage, I, because with, with the proposed coverage, it looks as though that pretty much gets taken away. It looks as though with the proposed coverage, you're gonna have significant in-building coverage, and then the leakage on that will be the, in-vehicle coverage will get increased as well.
Uh-huh.
Is that kind of correct?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea in terms of residents, how many people this would impact in terms of service upgrade?
Yeah, we, we use, like, two kinds of data for subscribers. We have the existing subscriber, which we use the billing address, and in that area we have two hundred and twenty-four existing subscribers. And we have also another data, which is the population of the area, that, and the population that would be served by this site, or the coverage would improve by this site, is around four thousand and nine hundred.
So, you're looking at roughly a four thousand seven hundred potential customer upgrade?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant, of commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Peterson.
The, the resident, I, the resident I talked to who was very much opposed to this application, I think was probably affected by the proximity of it, the, across the street from this pole, there are two poles that are just about, either one of them is maybe thirty or forty feet away. If you were to use either one of those poles, you would pretty much get the same, what do you call it here, proposed coverage, wouldn't you? If it were within forty feet of the existing site that's proposed, or the site that's proposed?
Are these at the same street, or like...
Yeah, same street. Forty feet away down the street in either direction, you would pretty much get the same coverage, wouldn't you?
If the pole is the same height, and we can get the same...
Right.
...position center, thirty feet will not make much difference.
Thank you.
I just want to make a note that we also have to make sure that it, that the pole meets the requirements of PG&E on whether or not we can locate the antenna on the pole. So, depending on what is currently on the pole, we, that would have to be examined.
Would be, have to be abandoned?
Examined.
Oh, examined, oh, thank you.
Through the chair, can I ask another question?
You certainly may, Commissioner.
Is there any particular reason that you use seven feet as the, as the height?
Yes, that's a requirement by PG&E. The meter has to be set seven feet on the pole.
You can't go any higher than that?
We also have restrictions on how high the equipment can go, so I believe we're restricted to eighteen feet on the top.
And whose restrictions are those?
PG&E. And also...
They'll only allow you to go so high on the pole?
Exactly. The pole is, purpose of the pole is for, you know, providing electrical service, so we're, you know, a tenant on that pole, so our, whether or not we can be on that pole is restricted by the use, by PG&E of that pole.
And so, are you telling me that, based on the picture that I'm seeing here, that the, that the equipment both meets the minimum and the maximum height as allowed by PG&E?
Correct.
And there's no room to deviate from that?
No. We can't...
And would that be true of any pole that you go to?
Right now, our equipment, yeah, we have pretty much set height on where we can go and the separation needed between the equipment cabinet. So, we have to start at seven feet at the bottom of the meter, and then the top of the meter, I believe, cannot exceed.
It, it just appears to me that seven feet is a little too low, that even, even ceilings in a house are at eight feet. Seven feet is just, it's, I think it's just low.
Through the chair.
Oh, yes.
Just to note on seven feet, I think the building code allows for seven feet, because doors are at seven feet. So, even though the ceiling clearance may be at eight, the minimum height requirement for a walk-through is at seven feet?
Yeah, it's a hallway, I'm not, but I just think that seven feet over a, over a sidewalk is too low. I'm not even sure, and perhaps Aaron could answer this question, on a, on a sign hanging out over a sidewalk, what's the minimum height that the sign could be at?
Yeah, it is also at seven feet within our code and within our design guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
There's a question of the applicant. I'm certain that you've encountered these situations, you know, city after city after city, and what the primary concerns, you know, I would think that these are the primary concerns of the public. This is not the first time, San Bruno isn't the only city that has these questions, and so, you must have addressed these issues over and over and over. Have you come up with a solution that, that is, it's a win-win for the community?
Currently...
Or solution?
Currently, this is a new design for T-Mobile, so, right now, there aren't, there're not a lot that have gone through the use permit process.
Okay.
So, at this time, I mean, I have a project in San Carlos at this time that's still being reviewed, so I can't say, you know...
So, do these questions go back to the project team, the developer of these, to, you know, go back and, so there's, I mean, you're answering the questions, you're doing the very best you can based on the information that you have, but there's someone making those decisions behind the scenes, there are others that are, there are developing the designs and, you know, all of the specifics and meeting federal and state requirements, but do they go back to the team to see what other solutions could happen?
We are, I mean, as technology advances, you know, equipment design changes, but right now, currently, the, this is the smallest equipment available that is utilized, for utilization on, on these poles, that will meet T-Mobile's required coverage need, so...
And should there be any change to equipment? Do you come back and, and update the equipment? I mean, I know that it's not functioning properly, or it's antiquated, but in this situation, electronics just change, you know, overnight practically.
Definitely.
And so, is there, you know, if, since this is new, and these questions are being raised, and if there are better options, is there a process in place to come back to make those changes, rather than just living with it?
I think that, that my, Amr might be able to help that, because I know it's technology that changes and the need for the coverage, the equipment is, by the manufacturers, updated to meet the need of the engineers, so when that equipment is available, definitely, if that site requires an upgrade, it would, it will be upgraded. But at this time, right now, I know that this is the current design to meet the current coverage need in this area.
So, I think that in, in situations, you know, when these first came up numbers many years ago, there was a huge concern about safety, and there are many regulations and guidelines, and many of those issues have been resolved. However, the public still has their questions and concerns, and so I think part of it is creating, like, FAQs, and, and you get these questions ongoing. For us, they're new in our community, but you must get them frequently enough that to minimize the concerns or answer some of the questions that our community, our public may have.
Typically, T-Mobile utilizes larger equipment cabinets that are located on the So, for these, for these right-of-way sites in residential areas, that ground equipment is, can't be utilized. Space issues is one of them. So, this is, the equipment has evolved, become smaller, so that, that is what we're currently, we currently have right now with this design, is the smallest equipment possible.
So, we can look at this basically as sort of two concepts. Either we're the guinea pigs, or we're on the cutting edge. And so, you know, it's sort of looking at, I think my, my point is, what could, you know, if, as these concerns come up, what solutions can be put in place, so that way we can meet the needs of our community? Because I do, you know, this is the way of life, I mean, everyone wants best service. And, but in, within our communities, there are, there are, you know, everyone has different requests, different needs, some are visual, some are safety, there's such a range, and so we're in a position to, to look at these and to do our very best to hear all the input and then look for solutions and some other options as things develop and change. Thank you for answering that.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
I have a question, and it relates to Sheet A5, if you want to turn to that.
What, Sheet A5?
Yeah.
Are you sure that your constraints are between seven and eighteen feet on the pole?
Could you repeat that? I couldn't quite hear.
Sorry. Can you confirm that your, the constraints for the cabinets are, is between seven and eighteen feet on the pole? Because according to the drawing, the, the bottom of the cabinet is at seven feet, the top of the cabinet is at sixteen feet nine inches, which means potentially you could move it one foot three inches to satisfy Commissioner Samut.
I would have to, I mean, I don't have the, I believe that's it, I don't have the written documentation. I also have the, the overhead lines also have to meet a separation requirement, so I don't know if that is two feet or three feet. So, in addition to the restrictions for team, for PG&E, for the equipment, we also have to meet clearance of the overhead line. So, there is a requirement for separation between the equipment and the overhead line, which is at twenty feet.
Staff help?
Any other questions?
Well, who, help? How do we, how do we solve this?
I, I mean, if that were a specific condition that you would like to raise the, you know, raise it the one foot three inches, and we don't have the exact requirements now that PG&E has, I mean, the, yeah, I mean, what, you could either, you could, you could structure the condition in a way that says, basically, you bring the boxes up as high above street level as possible under PG&E's limitations.
Would that satisfy Commissioner Samut?
Would you repeat that, Commissioner?
Would that satisfy Commissioner Samut?
Pardon me?
Would that satisfy you?
Yeah, except I have the sneaking suspicion that it's going to be seven feet. We could put it in there, but I don't, my guess is it's not gonna change.
If, if possible, yeah, if we can, if we can raise it so that we have the proper clearance between the overhead line and meet the PG&E top clearance requirement, that can definitely be done.
Through the chair. I don't think seven feet or eight feet is gonna make a difference, it's ugly either way. It needs to be stealth, it needs to be hidden, it needs to be at ground level in a box like, like telephone equipment is. The applicant made a great comment a few minutes ago, "The purpose of this pole is for power." That was out of her mouth, out of her words, and we can, we can move it up a foot, down a foot, we can move, you know, do this and do that, it's not stealth. It's, I mean, I don't have, I'm not, I don't have a Webster's dictionary, but stealth is not four blocks hanging seven feet from a pole where everybody can see it.
Well, I suppose stealth is, what stealth is for, you know, industry. Commissioner Yosavi.
This report was provided by you folks?
Yeah.
This is your information, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm looking at these RF maps, and what you show, the fourteen thirty-nine Park Avenue facility and the Grundy Park facility, the coverage on these diagrams looks very similar. It's not the same, I'll grant you that, but it looks very, very similar. And your description says, "This site was not selected as a T-Mobile site, is avail, this site was not selected as T-Mobile is, is able to meet the requirements of coverage objective by utilizing an existing structure and smaller equipment." My question is, what compelling reason do we have to allow you to put up a structure that we've held everyone to a higher standard to? What, what reason should we exclude you or give you an exception when we've held other people to higher standards? We've asked other people to put up trees, we've asked other people to stealth their equipment, why should we allow you not to?
We feel that this proposal is stealth, and at, for this particular location...
Okay, that's fine.
...utilizes an existing structure per, you know, the municipal code next to locating on a building. In our opinion, the proposed facility is stealth and meets our coverage need.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, we've held everybody else to higher standards. We've got trees all over town that are stealth, we've got other poles that, you know, they've done other designs that are much more stealth, we've got a flagpole at Tanforan that, you know, is completely stealth. Why, I don't understand why we should go this route.
At this location, there's no site available that meets the coverage objective that...
Right, but your Grundy, your document says that Grundy Park would work, and the reason that you're not doing it is because you could put it on a smaller pole.
Are we, I think we're at, that's the next project? Right now, we're talking about the Niles project?
I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
But the question on both of those is still gonna remain.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall?
If it was possible, if PG&E would allow it, could a new hollow pole be put at this same location and replace this pole, and this equipment be put inside of it? Cost being no factor.
A new, what type of pole?
On the Niles. Could a hollow pole, like a flagpole type of situation, and the equipment be inserted inside, which your diameter of the, of the pole would be roughly the same as what it is now, could that pole be replaced with a, with a hollow pole with the equipment inside? Like, like the one at Tanforan the commissioner was talking about? If cost was not a factor?
You know, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not quite sure how that design, I believe the, the pole would be, have a really large diameter if the equipment were to be completely enclosed within it. I can't answer, I can't answer that, that's a design that's never been explored.
Exactly. Thank you.
Through, through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
There was an earlier question about...
There was an earlier question about whether equipment could be put underground. My understanding is that the location of the equipment, the way that was addressed, it was a question of whether the heat generated would be too much. But wouldn't it be possible to put this equipment in an equipment cabinet that was located near the pole as long as you had some ventilation in that cabinet?
We did look at installing equipment on the ground, a, a larger equipment cabinet on the ground that was presented to staff.
Well, you could put, you could rent space from a resident and put it off, it doesn't have to be on the sidewalk, it could be off to the side.
I believe that option was examined, was presented to staff. Staff requested that information during the application process.
Okay. So the only one you didn't discuss was putting the cabinet underground, which also could be ventilated.
Correct.
Thank you.
So you, through the chair, you did not discuss underground with staff?
No, we did not.
I know in front of my office, there is two big metal plates and there's PG&E equipment, there's telephone equipment, there's Samuel Cable equipment, and they come out, they lift up the sidewalk, they work on it, they close it back down and no one sees it when it's closed. And could, could that kind of, is that it be done here?
I, I'm not sure. I can't, I can't make that decision. I'd need to inquire with T-Mobile.
Any other questions of the commissioners to the applicant? I do have just two. Number one, on your proposal, and this is showing Niles, on our staff report, if you look across the street, you have Parkside School. And in that picture, I believe it could be the two poles that Commissioner Peterson was possibly referring to. They're across the street from the residence, you know, residence houses. And curious if those, either one of those two poles were looked at as far as, you know, you're doing your coverage, making your coverage what you need to have. I mean, it's relatively close proximity to what the proposed one is right now and it really wouldn't be, you know, in the neighbors' or residents' face, if you will.
You know, I don't have photos of those poles.
Do they have a, can we give them a copy of the staff report to show them which one I'm referring to there? Or you can take it over there? Or I could take it over there? But I think Matt has it. Well, that's why I'm not seeing anything there. I haven't seen any number on it. Advance them, that's all, I mean. Sorry about this. I think Matt has it. It's got the little red car in the foreground of it, right next to it.
I can't, I can't really see what is on that pole.
Doesn't appear, at least from the picture, to be, you know, any more covered with, you know, whatever you want to call the, the arms that are coming out.
I believe the, the smaller pole wasn't considered, and then also the, the pole
The one in the foreground appears to be the same size as the one that, you know, visually that we're looking at as a proposed pole.
I believe that one may have been, there was, we made, it may not have looked like it was in the public right-of-way. It looked like it may have been on the school property.
Okay. And if it's on the school property, was, then there a reason why? Is it just because it was, you know, Parkside School?
And we'd also have to enter into a lease agreement with the school.
Exactly. Okay.
We have a master license agreement with PG&E to locate facilities in the right-of-way on their, on the joint utility poles. And I can't...
Wouldn't most of these be on the right, in the right-of-way? I, it seems to me, I mean...
So bottom line, it's a cost factor.
No, also, T-Mobile prefers not to locate facilities on school property.
Because of opposition?
Potential opposition, correct.
Well, we've been here for two meetings and about four hours of opposition on this site.
Well, short of, you know, looking at the poles that are on that side of the street and the stealth issue that has been raised, is there some way to hide these boxes? I mean, some way to put some sort of enclosure around them so at least, you know, they wouldn't be so obtrusive to the eye? I mean, something that would be, you know, round and ventilated where there would still be enough, you know, air circulation so that they wouldn't, you know, overheat or whatever the, the reason is that we have to have them on the, or, you know, they need to be on the pole? I mean, I would think that there could be some sort of cover on them or something so at least they wouldn't be, you know, so obvious. Has there been any thought to that or is there any design for something such as that?
Currently, we don't, don't have a design for that.
Through the chair. Can I make a suggestion that maybe we can close this part of the meeting, go to a public hearing and then come back here? Maybe somebody has an idea or has an opinion or then, or we can go on from this? If no one has any, maybe nobody here wants to talk, but just getting the opportunity.
Well, let me ask you this. Are there any other questions from the commissioners right now in this, regarding this one right here?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
One for applicant, also probably one for staff. Has there been any other projects that have been able to have other types of designs? I know that this is cutting edge, I like to refer to it as cutting edge. And are there any other considerations or anything on the table that might have had discussion that could be proposed or suggested? And I know there are logistics and I'm certainly not an engineer, but if a real tree was put in place to camouflage it, is that an option, not an option?
A real tree to, to camouflage the equipment?
Mm-hmm.
On the pole?
Well, not, no. I don't think you put a real tree on a pole, but, you know, and, and I'm not suggesting necessarily in only the site, but just in general, that a tree can be planted, a pole can be put in there. I mean, I really don't know all the logistics of what you have to go through. And so there are just, you know, ideas that are coming, recognizing all of the obstacles and the discussions taking place. A lot of it is aesthetics. And, and also there's a lot of graffiti that goes with these kinds of things. I mean, granted, I've seen graffiti in the middle of the freeway, can't even imagine how they get there, so it can happen any place. But I think some of these issues are, you know, a lot of aesthetic types of things. So are there other considerations within the design that the team has looked at?
For this particular design, this, this deployment of this design? No, this was, this is the, the current design proposed.
It's my, it's my understanding through the discussion that it's not in opposition to the, to the project. It's primarily designed, and this is the beginning of something and what goes next and next, and it's sort of a precedent that gets set in place. And so what are the next kinds of things that we have to face and how many? And all of a sudden, you know, you're seeing one thing and all of a sudden you look down the sort of street and you're seeing lots of other types of things, recognizing it covers a small area. So I think that it warrants, you know, some discussion at the other end because as, as I mentioned, it's not the opposition of the project. And, and so it, it appears to me that more consideration of other options would certainly be, you know, in appropriate direction.
Okay.
It's just my thoughts on that.
Okay. Let me ask Erin a question, or our city attorney. If Commissioner Marshall's suggestion was to ask anybody from the public if they would like to comment on that, comment on this particular agenda item, is that within reasonable guidelines for us to do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, once you open public comment, so if you were open public comment, take the public comment in. Yeah, that's, I think you actually have to since this was noticed as a public hearing.
Well, I understand that. What I'm talking about is opening it up and then having whoever wants to, excuse me, speak on it, then close it, and then, you know, we continue on with, with our discussion. I mean, it's pretty much...
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Is anybody here opposed to doing that? Any of the commissioners? Okay. Tell you what, then why don't we open it up to public comment because I know there is some individuals from the public out here and perhaps they would like to speak on this. So let me open up public comment and those who wish to speak on this particular item, if you would like to go to the microphone and give us your name and your street.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Charles Penparais. I have the property at 1413 Park Avenue. I know it doesn't pertain to this Nigel Avenue, but the thing, it's all relevant. I have several questions for T-Mobile. If they really want to do this thing right, why don't they put up a satellite? They could cover the whole West Coast and nobody'd have to look at it because this is really ugly. And I don't want to have to look out my front window and see this thing hanging on a pole. And I don't think anybody here would either because it's bad. The other question I have is, what do you do in Foster City? They don't have telephone poles. Everything's underground or it's in a box. I was, I was asking a question about why, why couldn't they move the Park Ave, the Park Avenue pole into, into the telephone pole in Grundy Park, right in the back? And I was told because there's cross members on the pole, but if you look at exhibit...
Through the chair. Excuse me. We should probably talk about that.
Absolutely. That's what I was just going to say. This is a different, it's the same, but it's different. It's a different application and we really have to stay on the one on Niles.
You're going to stay on Niles?
At this time, yeah, we do. I'm sorry.
You want me to come back?
Yeah.
Please.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on that proposed project on Niles Avenue? I guess I wasn't clear, my fault, sorry. Saying that, okay, I will close public comment on Niles Avenue. I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners to continue the discussion as to this particular project.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall?
My only comments, I think, are pretty clear. I'm, the, the antenna part of it, the top part is, I have no problem with at all, but I think T-Mobile or any applicant that comes with an application like this should, can come with a better option of the power and the equipment, be it underground, be it, you know, like the other utilities companies do with PG&E and, and telephone companies do. There's plenty of room across the street. If the, if the location is, they can put a big hole in Parkside lawn and I think it's just a matter of paying Parkside what they want to pay. I think if, if the money issue, if this was a resident, we would not allow a resident to, to put something this ugly in front of the house if it was just going to save them a couple of dollars. And so I can't support this project the way it stands.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah.
Through the chair. I, I kind of echo what Commissioner Biassadi said in that we, I don't think that we've ever declined in application for a cell tower of any kind in San Bruno. But we've been pretty particular about the stealth aspect of that setup. And, and actually, I think if you drive around, it'd be, you'd be pretty hard pressed to find some of these cell locations because we have done a very good job of making sure that they blended in to the area in which they were being placed. Having said that, I, I don't think yours does. And as the gentleman stated, what do you do in Foster City? There aren't any telephone poles. I mean, just hanging equipment on a telephone pole because it's in a public right-of-way as opposed to putting it somewhere where you may have to pay for the right to have it, I think is a little, is a little lame personally. If you look at, I mean, the picture of the project that you have in Atherton, it looks great and, and it's because the foliage of the trees helps to soften it quite a bit. And there are plenty of trees up here in Niles. I, I think you can find a spot to hang this where the equipment will be somewhat camouflaged by the, the canopy of the trees. Putting it in the public right-of-way, just hanging it out there, just doesn't do it for me.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I, I agree with the other commissioners who have spoken on this. And at the same time, I think there's opportunities to locate this on the Parkside School side of the street. And at the time, I was thinking a really good site would be the PG&E pole at the parking lot at the school. And I think that might work. But then again, I wasn't even thinking of the idea of just putting a separate pole there, pretty much in the same vicinity. It's not near residence, it's not near the school, it is near the parking lot, but that's about it. And then, then you'd avoid the, the, the issue. I, I agree that it's not a stealth design. One thing they could do is put that equipment in a cabinet on a residence and rent the space from the residence and run the wires over to the antenna. But that was apparently not examined or putting it underground. It, it just seems that there are some alternatives that have not been really, there haven't been efforts to evaluate them. And so the application that we have is presented on a this-is-it basis where there are really some other, there's more thinking that can be done. Going back just a little bit in the meeting to the time when the question was asked, how many of more of these will it take to cover San Bruno so that all the houses can get in-house reception? It's probably dozens. It wouldn't take much imagination to see that. I don't think that it probably wouldn't pay to do that, but it's possible. One other thing that occurs to me in the presentation, I believe, T-Mobile said the site at the water tank was 1.9 miles north of this site. In actuality, it's .19 miles north of it. I just, I know that minutes are being taken. I'd like them, like to make sure that those are recorded correctly. So anyway, I think the, the bottom line from my view is that there's, there are, there is public concern. The people I talked to said they weren't able to come to the meeting tonight, so this is my hearsay report of an ex parte communication.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions by the commissioners? No? Okay. I just have, I just have one, you know, one that I don't know if has been raised yet, but as I look at it on Niles, unfortunately, I live very close to there and I just happen to, you know, I mean, I walk that street every night. And the more I look at it, you know, the safety issue to me, and I could be way wrong just looking at how, you know, the boxes are exposed and everything, and I know that the equipment is actually encased inside those, but beyond just coming up with some stealthy design as has been, you know, described and great detail over and over again, I mean, it just, they kind of look a little bit unsafe to me, especially at seven feet tall. And maybe I'm, I'm off base with this, but it, to me, it gives that appearance. So that was my particular comment as I was thinking about it some more. So...
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I, I think, I'm just hesitant to guess here, but it's based on a little... I, I think, I'm just hesitant to guess here, but it's based on a little bit of experience. Those boxes may very well be offset from the pole, several inches, I think it's four inches, just because PG&E needs the space to climb the pole. I don't, I don't really know, but I think T-Mobile does the best they can with what they have, with the exception of, in this case, I don't think their evaluation included some very reasonable locations that would alleviate a lot of the concerns. And, and I'm, I for one, and I don't think anyone on the commission feels any differently, I'm, I am not opposed to T-Mobile's improving their coverage. I think it's a benefit to the citizens of San Bruno. It's supported by federal law, and generally, it seems a good idea. And for that reason, I, I would like to make a motion to continue this application to a date uncertain, in that I think, I feel it may be coming back. Let me ask the city attorney, is that permissible?
No. I mean, I'm not going to... Yes, but I don't recommend it, and the reason for that is, you're under a shot clock that the FCC has enacted.
Through the chair.
And assuming the amount of time that you have for this particular facility is 150 days, that runs from the date that this FCC regulation came down. So I think the date is April sixth, no later than April sixteenth, provided this is deemed to be another facility and not a co-located facility. Otherwise, it's tonight. So, my understanding is this is deemed another facility, a different type of facility, other than co-located, under our regulations. So, no later than April sixteenth, or it's automatically approved. And the reason is that the Federal Communications Commission was concerned that cities were unreasonably delaying decisions on these types of facilities. So, it needs to happen before then. One other recommendation I would have, I think you've done a pretty good job of covering the, the facts that I think that you're wanting to base the decision on, and that is the really kind of two components that you needed to look at. One is the, the aesthetic considerations that you have. And of course, aesthetic considerations are something that you can factor in. The issue under our code, as you've correctly pointed out, is, is, are they meeting the stealth design requirement, which, put simply, is whether it is designed sufficiently to render it minimally visible or unobtrusive as possible. So some of the facts that I've heard you describe, I just want to make sure that I understand them, is that you're finding that they don't blend in, that they are, that there could be some other design that would make it less visible, that it's low, perhaps maybe even creating a safety issue, being some of the, the main issues in addition to sort of a lack of camouflage. But the other component that you need to look at is, even if it is unobtrusive, or regardless of the aesthetic considerations, the decision to deny an application based purely on aesthetic considerations essentially would be invalidated if it would effectively operate as a prohibition on the provision of service to the provider. And so what that means is, is there a significant gap in coverage that they are seeking to fill? Now, that's the burden of the applicant to show you, that there is a significant gap in coverage, and that they've made some reasonable inquiry into the feasibility of alternative facilities or locations. Now, that's a highly fact-specific inquiry. What I hear you resting your facts on, and that's what I want to make sure that I'm understanding, is that you believe that there are alternative locations, that they have not yet fully investigated, that would allow them to fill, either that there isn't a significant gap in coverage, or that there are alternative facilities that they have not yet fully investigated, that would allow them to make that coverage, excuse me, gap in coverage filled. Am I understanding that correctly?
Through the chair. Just one question on that. Not only other locations, other methods of storing the equipment.
Right.
Because if, if they came, personally, if they came back and said, okay, well, we'll use the pole across the street at park side with the same method of installation, I would have the same feelings. But I think that they could, I, again, I'm not an engineer, but I think that this equipment could be stored underground or, or encased somewhere more stealth.
Well, so one of the issues that you'd be asking them about in terms of underground is, you can't require them to do something that you're not asking other providers to do, and you can't ask them to do something that would be technically or financially infeasible. So, I'm assuming then, that one of your questions for the applicant relates to providing you information about that.
Exactly.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I think, I think there's records in previous commission hearings that establish those exact same conditions. We've been concerned about the location of equipment, required fencing, shrubbery, and other screening to minimize impact on the public. But I, I think really, at the heart of a lot of this tonight is that, well, first of all, T-Mobile, this is relatively new ground for them, so I have to feel for the, for the men and women who are involved in trying to get something done that's new. And possibly, that's, that's what is causing some of this extended hearing, but I'm not sure, but it could be that they haven't examined some of the things we brought up tonight, simply because they were trying to select supporting evidence for the materials in their application, and try to move forward the, the application the way it stands, not so much look for something else that would pretty much fill this coverage area if it is a gap, and be substantially less obtrusive on the neighborhood. And I think it is possible. So that was what I had in mind when I was talking about a motion to continue, forgetting that there is a deadline on the, on the deny. So I would...
I'm sorry, and just as long as everybody understands, even if you don't like the design, ultimately, if a particular location is necessary in order for them to fill a gap in coverage, then they get the spot.
But...
Right.
So that, that's just something you need to be aware of. It's a two-pronged analysis, is what I'm pointing out to you, that there, you can evaluate and consider the aesthetic design. That is an appropriate thing for you to consider. But the reason, the second part of the analysis is important, is that even if you don't like the design, if it is necessary in order for them to fill a substantial gap in coverage, then it would be improper for you to deny, deny the application. That's why that second prong is important, but that really is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
With that, I'd like to make a motion, we deny...
Hold on, hold on one second. Commissioner Marshall, Commissioner, Commissioner, you have a question?
I have a question for the city attorney. If the applicant decides to hold on to the application from this point forward until April sixteenth, is it automatically approved?
I'm not sure what you mean, hold on.
Just say it's continued, and we'll hold on to it till April sixteenth, and we won't bring it back?
No, I mean, we would bring it forward to a, a decision point. You could, you should either, before April sixteenth, accept it, you know, approve it, or deny it.
Okay.
So, so for example, you may want to set it for the next hearing, so that if, so that you have a specific timeframe by which they provide you specific information, and you want to make very clear on the record what specific information it is that you want them to bring, one, two, three, four, or five. And either they bring it, or they don't. But I, I wouldn't push your application too far into the future, or it will be automatically approved by law.
But we have to give enough time to actually do a legitimate, you know, search on what we're asking them to do. So, at best, I mean, I would think it's going to be March, our next meeting. That doesn't leave us with much time after that.
Then maybe, if I'm understanding it correctly, we need to, or if it's our opinion, we need to deny this use permit based on the, the discussion tonight, and the staff will bring us back at the next meeting, the findings for denial, and we would approve them at that point, correct? Is that...
Is that correct? I thought we were just be looking for a continued...
Well, we don't deny too many things here, that's why we're unusual. But that, every, every time we've denied them, that's, the staff comes back with the, with the reasons for denial at the fall, at the, at the next meeting.
Right. You can do this either way. You could make a decision this evening, and then the applicant has the ability to appeal that to the city council. Or you can continue it, and I'm just cautioning that you don't continue it beyond April sixteenth, at which point it would be automatically approved.
Okay. If I'm hearing this correct, I'm going to make a motion and see if it's correct.
Through the chair.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Just a question. Can the applicant hold on to the project for legitimate reasons? You know, trying to find a solution, just gathering data, and all of a sudden, we're getting closer to that timeline? And, and then all of a sudden, we're facing that situation at the consequence of the timeline? And, and if you can address that, please.
Yeah, good question. So, I mean, there are two ways to go. One is that they can agree, and, but I would need to have it in writing, that they mutually agree to extend the deadline, and therefore, the federal regulations deadline that would otherwise cause the application to be automatically approved when then not apply. Although, I'm not sure that it, you could do, you could do that. Or you can set a specific date that you think is reasonable, and within the timeframe, and either they bring the information, or they don't, and you act on it. So you wouldn't just leave it in their hands to dally with the information and just let the clock run.
So if the applicant did not come back with the information, and then we have the ability to deny it again?
You would have the ability to deny it at that point.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So are all the commissioners clear on all of our options here, what we can and cannot do pretty much?
Yes. So with that, because I don't think we're even close to what I feel is an adequate design here, I would like to make a motion, and we deny the use permit oh nine twenty-five with all the discussion we had tonight, and the staff will come to us at the next planning commission meeting with the findings for denial to satisfy what we're, I think the staff knows, has the right reasons why we're, my, our opinions for denial, if it's voted in. Correct?
Correct.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to deny.
Can we have some discussion on that question? If somebody would like to discuss it.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Marshall?
I was under the impression we're continuing it to a specific meeting, and denial means that there is an appeal to the city council.
I tried that.
I, my, my wish is not to continue it, because I think it's too far off to continue. My wish is to, my motion is to deny it, and if they want to appeal to the city council, I was put in this spot to make a decision, what I feel is the best for the public, and that's what I feel is the best for the neighbors up there.
So, if you will, your choice is yea or nay, when it comes time for a vote? So, there is a motion and a second on the floor?
I have a question.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Peterson?
Assuming this were to pass, then they could appeal to the council, or they could come back here with a new application. Isn't that correct? I, I'm, excuse me, my question is city attorney, or, or the planning director?
But there's also a third option then, too.
Wow, yeah.
Okay, yeah, in the past, we haven't done this in a long time, since we haven't denied something in a long time. But we phrase it, if you deny something without prejudice, they're able to come back under the same application. So, phrase it in that, and then they'd be able to come back under the same application.
I'll use those words.
Okay, I'll accept that.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Sumut.
What does that do to the clock?
Well, I, I'm a little uncertain that that's really a viable alternative here, because I think it leaves it unclear what they're supposed to do, whether they're supposed to appeal it to the city council or not.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
Through the attorney. They, even if we deny it, period, they can bring a new application, can't they?
Anytime, yes.
Right. So, they can, depending on what they think their preference is, they could go to the city council, the higher body, or they can bring back that application.
Right. And the only difference is that they'd have to pay new...
Or nothing at all.
My understanding is that, without prejudice, is to save the residents' fees for reapplying. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, that's all it does.
That would be the only difference, is they wouldn't have to pay.
I think T-Mobile can afford the hundred and twenty-five dollars to reapply.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Question for, for our attorney. If we deny it, and they appeal it to the city council, and they deny it, then can the application be presented again? And it would, it would be a new application, and it would not be under the, would not be under, right now, without prejudice, so it allows them to come back without having to have those fees. But if we deny it, and then they, what would be the procedure if, if the city council denies it?
If the city council denies it, there are one of two things that can happen. One is T-Mobile will sue the city and require the city to defend its decision in court. That's a very likely course of action. The other is that T-Mobile could decide that it will reapply, and it would be up to the city council whether it wanted to do so under terms which the, was done without prejudice, such that their, their fees would not be charged.
Thank you. Is there any way I can make a, a comment?
Sure, you may, you may.
I guess, in hearing all the discussions with, with the commission, I mean, T-Mobile wants to present a suitable project for the commission and staff. The option, I can't say whether or not the option, which seems like a lot of the commissioners want, of undergrounding equipment is possible, I can't make that decision, because I'm not an engineer. I don't know what that entails. But, I mean, I would, instead of denying the project is possible, I would like to examine that possibility and come back at the next March hearing with that answer, you know, yes or no, that is a possibility, and what that would look like, if, if, if possible. I mean, if that's a solution that staff or the commission, you know, would want to see, I, I would like the opportunity for T-Mobile to examine, explore that option.
Thank you. And I think there's probably some other options, as we discussed, that maybe, you know, you'd be willing to take a look at if, I don't know what's going to happen with this particular motion that's on the floor at this point in time, but, you know, if it were to, to be where you were to come back, then you'd be willing to look at some of the other options that we've discussed, too. Correct? Besides the underground one, I mean.
Are the alternate location options?
Alternate locations, and stealthness, and...
I thought that stealthness was the, towards underground...
Well, it is, but underground is not necessarily the only stealth option, is what I'm trying to, to tell you. And you're telling me that the only one...
One other, the, the screening of the, I don't know, you also wanted to, I guess, the, the one that I saw that seemed to be supported by most commissioners, Sumut, Marshall, and Peterson, was the possibility of undergrounding. I know you talked about the possible screening. I don't know if that also, I mean, your concern with the height, I don't know if that would address that. It seems like if the undergrounding was a viable option...
Well, certainly, that would be best, but, you know, that's, yeah, certainly, you could bring that back, but I think there's some other options that, you know, that we've discussed, that you might want to look into as well, if that were to occur.
Okay.
Okay?
Through, through the chair. That, may I address the applicant?
Yeah, you may, please.
Okay. The, one of the things that I was thinking was, I was hoping that T-Mobile wouldn't go away and, and just take no action and just sue the city, or something like that. I think this is a environment in which there's really no opposition to your plan to improve coverage. It's, it's just the way you do it. And so, what I was hoping you would do is not just look at undergrounding at that, at that exact site. That would be fine with me. But, and I suspect I have some company in that respect, but you might also check with Parkside School. They have a parking lot over there, there's, there's some space over there, which if you put the equipment in a cabinet, screened with some plantings, that might be just as well-received, and probably a lot less expensive than undergrounding. So basically, what I'm saying is, don't just stop at that. Look at, look in that little area and see if there isn't something else that might work. I don't think Parkside School is unilaterally opposed to any specific alternatives, and I don't know that they've heard any. So I'm just, I'm just saying that I'm in, I'm in favor of hearing some more, and I'm trying to hope that you would be encouraged enough to try to do a little creative thinking here. Thank you.
Through the chair. You know what? We have a motion and a second on the floor right now, Commissioner Marshall, and if it's something that's new...
I was just going to say, we have a motion on the floor. That's, I have, yeah. I was just gonna say, we have a motion on the floor, that's, I have, yeah.
Okay, and I believe that commissioners all know, you know, what, what we're looking at here, what the consequences are, so I think at this point in time, we're gonna call for the vote on this particular motion.
This is the one to deny it.
This is the one to deny it. So, all those in favor of denying without prejudice, say aye.
Wait a minute, wait, we're not gonna, the city attorney recommended not to, not to put the vote without prejudice.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, so I have to call for the vote, do I not?
Yeah, and, and I'll withdraw that in light of the comments of the, um, community development director.
So a vote of yes is to deny, a vote of no is, you know, obviously then not to have the denial, correct? Correct. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Those in favor of approving, of passing this motion as a denial, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so...
Can I get the record clear, it would be easier for me if there were a roll call vote?
You wanna hand vote?
Ayes.
So, Commissioner Samut?
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson?
No.
Chair Chase?
No.
Commissioner Biassadi?
No.
Commissioner Mishra?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
All right, so the fails.
So that motion is dead.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I have, uh, another motion. I'd like to ask staff, what's the date of the next meeting in March?
March sixteenth.
Okay, uh, I'm, I move to continue this to, uh, March sixteenth.
Okay, there is a motion to continue it to March sixteenth.
Second.
And there's a second, on the question. Do we have a large agenda that evening, do you know?
Um, I'm, I'm not certain at this time. Uh, we may, the housing element will probably be on it. But we could do some agenda balancing if it, if it is, if it is too large, so.
Is there a possibility of moving this, as we've done before? You know, where we have two meetings in a month, I mean, if...
There's a possibility of having an early March meeting, yes. I don't, but I would say that we could see if the applicant's able to, I, I think we've heard all the information, uh, that you want to hear within this continuance. We'll have to talk to the applicant if, if two weeks is enough to get it.
Exactly.
If not, then there, we could also move some things that were supposed to be on the March sixteenth agenda down to the March second, if necessary.
Thank you.
Question on the motion. I think we're cutting ourselves tight with time, Aaron. If, if they bring this as a continuation, if they bring this to the March sixteenth, and there's some changes we would like to see on it, if we like the project and there's changes that we'd like to see, then we're at the next meeting, which is April. Where, where their timeframe, I, I think we're cutting it too close on the continuation.
Thank you, so do we noted, uh, at this time, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm gonna call for the vote. Those in favor?
Through the chair. Can I just, I'd like to just ask the city attorney a question on that. Okay, so, this gets continued to March. Then our hands, not that our hands are tied, but then we really only have two options in March. It's either a pass or a fail.
That would be my recommendation, and I believe staff would bring to you findings both ways, so that you could act on it that evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we were discussing earlier. What we would do is, based on this discussion tonight, we'd also bring you an alternative. If, let's say they didn't turn in any of the information that you, that was necessary, we would bring in findings for denial attached to the staff report, too, so we'd be able to act in that fashion as well.
Would, would those findings include aesthetics?
They would, they would be based on your conversation, on the discussion that we had tonight.
Okay, so, city attorney?
One last thing, if you do, um, agree as a body to continue this, then I would just review with the applicant, the very specific information that you want the applicant to bring back to you. There were a lot of discussion items, so it would be best if you narrowed that down to one, two, three, four, five, exactly what you were wanting to see. I, for example, you talked about a stealth design, and there were a lot of different things. I heard you say you were interested in the technical and financial feasibility of undergrounding it. Heard somebody talk about stealth design with, um, screening through either plastic or live materials. I heard about, um, potentially putting all the cabinetry in the pole on, uh, covered with some sort of thing, or putting it in a, kind of encasing it in something. Uh, I heard about issues having to do with the height of it, and getting more definitive information there. I heard talk about cabinetry, and, you know, it wasn't clear to me whether that was, the planning commission's preference over something on a pole. So, I think you need to give the applicant specific guidance on what it is that they need to bring back to you.
You know, the stealth issue, whether it's a cabinetry or, or hiding it with, at least in my opinion, with something that's on the pole, or having it, the pole in a different location, where you can do something where, whether it's underground, I mean, all the things that you've just, you know, brought forth, you know, I would like to see all of those looked at realistically. I mean, they may look at it and say, no, that's just not feasible, and, and give us a, a reasonable, you know, reason for that. But to, I, I think to specifically limit it to cabinetry, you know, I, I don't really, I'm not really looking forward to that one specific, you know, option. I think, as some of the other, you know, commissioners have stated, there's some other, you know, avenues and options that we feel that, you know, need to be explored. So, that would be more, is that clear? I mean, am I, that's what I'm trying to...
Through the chair.
Get them to understand. Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
In response to your, your comments, I heard our attorney indicate some options, but not limited to those options of cabinetry. I also feel that, uh, I'm not the expert in this field, and so to make a decision of giving that list solely only tonight feels like I don't have my chance to do my homework of looking at their options, so maybe we can elicit the support of the staff, and that it's not limited to only the things that we suggest this evening, but maybe other ways. I would want to be sure that we do everything possible to look at options that will benefit the applicant as well as benefit our community. So, I feel limited in having to make that list this evening, so I'd like to suggest that, if that's a possibility, to assist us in that process.
Correct, what we could do is, uh, we'll review this whole discussion that we had tonight to pick out different things that different planning commissioners have said, as well as, based on our own experience, what we feel could have you make the best discussion, decision based on your discussion.
Through the chair.
What I don't want, what I don't want to walk away with is be sort of not clear in the process. I mean, that's really important, so I think that we need to have some strength in there, but have some language that indicates not limited to whatever the process is.
Yes, so, so I believe it would be inappropriate, actually, to leave it to staff. This is your decision, and you need to tell the applicant what you want. Uh, my comment wasn't intended to indicate that they would be limited only to that information, but that they needed at least to bring this back to you. And if they could bring back more, I'm sure that's all to the better.
That's how I interpreted it. But in listening to that piece of it, I thought, okay, there is a huge piece here for us. And, I mean, I can do my homework, but I certainly can't do it, make this decision tonight, and I really want it to be a win-win situation, so. And I would not expect the staff to, to do that, but I, but I believe that with the information that you receive, along with anything else that commissioners might have in the process of that, that we can direct it toward, towards the staff.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one more question on the time framing part of it. If we put these five items, well, I'm just using number five items to them, and they don't feel, they don't, they only have a month to put these ops, you know, options together, and they ask for a continuance, what happens to their time?
So if they ask for an extension in writing, and both parties agree, or we agree to recommend that to you at the March hearing?
Or for some reason they can't make it to the next meeting, I mean...
Right, they could, they could request it in writing, and I'm sure, um, that the staff would agree to make that recommendation to you, then at the next hearing it would be brought to you, you could make the decision. But as long as they have agreed in writing to extend it, then that stops the clock.
Okay, stops the clock.
Yes.
Okay, I have one question in regards to that. Is it appropriate to ask the applicant at this time, that in the event that they could not come up with, you know, enough information in that period of time that we're giving them, to agree to, you know, having something written, would that be appropriate?
It's funny that you should ask that, it's really the question that I stumbled over in my own mind a little while ago, when I sort of hesitated. I think it would be inappropriate to ask them at this juncture, because probably the applicant's representative would need to get the authority, uh, to make that sort of agreement. I think what you're asking is, can you ask her tonight whether they want to agree to that right now? And I think I wouldn't ask them to do that, let the representative go back to the people that she needs to speak with, and if they want to make that offer, then that's fine. But I don't think it would be appropriate to ask them to do that tonight.
Commissioner Mishra?
I just wanted to present the applicant with an opportunity to come to the podium and say, ask if they have any questions for us, as a, as a last gesture, before we close this.
Before we vote on this particular...
If there's any part of our discussion that needs more clarification, if you have any questions at this point.
I, I believe I'm clear on, on what you want us to do, and, for the, the next hearing, and I'll be able to make, you know, discuss it with T-Mobile tomorrow and, and get back to staff rather quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, good suggestion. Okay, there is a motion, there is a second on the floor. We are now going to call for the vote. No more questions, no more anything. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No. No.
Okay, the ayes have it by a count of, what, one, two, three, four, five to two, is that correct?
No, I'm gonna abstain on that one.
Pardon me?
I'm abstaining on that one.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay, so there's one abstain, abstention, whatever. Okay, well, the motion passes, so. Now, question for, um, Aaron, I suppose. So now, the motion is passed to continue it to the March sixteenth meeting. Is there any, as normal, like a ten-day appeal that they could to, for the continue? I mean, where does that, now, I mean, well, I understand that, because they wanted to appeal.
No, there's no decision, yeah.
Well, I just want to know legally if I had to make that disclaimer. Thank you very much.
They can, they can appeal a continuance.
Thank you, okay, just so it's clear for the record, all right. So that item is done. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda. And yes, there is another item. It is, uh, fourteen thirty-nine Park Avenue. It's a request for a conditional use permit to install a wireless telecommunications facility within a residential zoning district on a joint utility pole in the public right-of-way per sections twelve two twenty and twelve eighty-four point one sixty of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. Sounds vaguely familiar. Staff report, please.
We, we could go into a full staff report, but I think we've heard what your recommendations are, and since this is a similar, similar application, I would ask the chair if you would like to hear a staff report right now, or would you prefer just to have a similar recommendation for continuation, based on that last discussion? And public hearing as well?
Thank you very much, yes. My, you know, I don't really think that we need to have another staff report on pretty much the exact same thing, only with a different block. Um, I'm okay with that. The applicant, though, would they, do you need to add anything into, into this fourteen thirty-nine Park Avenue application? Or are you, it's pretty much the same as the last one, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna go through the alternate site analysis.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, certainly, please.
You gotta do that.
So we will ask the applicant, forget the staff report.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I, I think the biggest difference between these two sites is that they started construction at Niles, and this one, the construction hasn't started.
That's true, thank you. Okay.
So I just wanted to go quickly through the alternate site analysis for Park Avenue. This is the proposed facility. There were five alternates examined. Next slide. The first, uh, so this is, this is the current coverage for this area, San Bruno. Right now, uh, we're limited to in-vehicle coverage, and the proposed facility is to improve in-building coverage, as shown on the next slide. So this is the proposed coverage area. Next slide. So the first alternate that we looked at was Grundy Park. Next slide. So the proposal for this site would be a new pole structure in the, in the park, at a height of fifty feet. And, at, for this facility, we would utilize larger equipment cabinets, and this was not selected as a new pole would be, uh, installed. And with the proposed facility, we're utilizing existing structure with smaller equipment on the pole.
Excuse me, through the chair, I, I'd like to ask a question. What, what is the reason you didn't like Grundy Park?
We would be required to install a new pole structure.
Oh, you can't use the, the power pole that's...
Unfortunately not, and I'll go through that. The, there's, the PG&E attack requirements for installing facilities on that pole, on those poles aren't met, and I, I'll be going through that.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Then we can ask questions after that.
So the next site we looked at was the Peninsula Christian Fellowship Church property at five ninety-nine Cedar Avenue. Next. So this site, uh, we proposed a new pole structure at fifty feet, and this is the proposed coverage, so approximately sixty, sixty-six percent of the target area is not met. Uh, in addition, um, this site was not selected as there, uh, was the possibility of a, a development on the parcel for housing. We looked at City Hall, next slide. So we looked at a fifty-foot pole at this site. Unfortunately, none of the coverage areas met. Uh, in addition, it's a little bit too close to the existing site, uh, two sites, and causes a bit of overlap. Fourth site we looked at was AT&T Office Building, a new fifty-foot pole. So this site, this is the proposed coverage at that site, so none of the proposed coverage is met. And it has some overlap with the existing site, um, at Cherry Avenue. We looked at the Bay Hill Shopping Center site, a new fifty-foot pole. Uh, so similarly, uh, this overlaps with the existing site at nine hundred Cherry Avenue, and also doesn't meet any of the coverage objectives. So these are the poles that we investigated in, um, the park. This pole has that riser, electrical riser, that prevents installation of equipment. The pole, uh, there's another pole we looked at, um, which has crossarms on it. And then, in addition, we did look at another pole that was, um, a query was made by one of the neighbors. The pole is actually located in their rear yard, so there were some access issues. And in addition, that pole had, um, crossarms on it, so that prevented us from locating on it. So this is the proposed site. We're gonna attach to the top the tennis screen with a radome, and equipment on the pole painted to match. And that concludes my presentation.
Through the chair. Aren't there crossarms on that pole that you selected?
Not the current pole, not, the crossarms, two crossarms and, uh, perpendicular to each other.
Oh, so when you say crossarms, before you meant, uh, double cross?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, just trying to understand this, thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra?
A question for the applicant. Trying to put this as delicately as possible. What's annoying me in both presentations is the fact that, given some planning analysis, that this coverage that you're trying to get is within fifty, hundred feet of this location. And the investigative team that picked these alternate, like, locations cannot provide coverage to the space that you've already picked. It's, it seems, it's annoying me to my bones, um, to... I, I, I feel that the, the team is actually looking at the problem as a engineer, whereas we're looking at this, we're trying to look for a solution as an architect. We, we are thinking of the solution as, you have a proposal to make this site better. If you start looking at locations three-quarters of a mile away, you're not satisfying the problem. We agree that you may have a problem here, that you may have to enhance the site capabilities. So if we just agree that you're going to stick within fifty feet of this location and give us solutions based on design from an architect's perspective versus design from an engineer's perspective, you know, the whole classic question of form versus function is what we're concerned about. I, it, it's annoying me when I see diagrams that, oh, it's not going to satisfy the, the requirements of the, of the proposal. And it's been consistent with this prob, this proposal, and the one proposal before this, or application before this. I, we understand that you may want to... We understand that you may want to increase the coverage in the, in this location, but we're looking for an aesthetic resolution to the problem. These five sites really don't mean much to us when they don't satisfy the core function or the core reason for your making this proposal.
These were sites that were, we were directed to look at by staff and by the commission. So I'm a little, we, these were sites that we would not have considered for, we didn't consider for our, our search area because we knew they did not meet our objective. But we were directed specifically to look at other locations along San Bruno that may, San Bruno Avenue that may meet, or, you know, that are viable. And these unfortunately were the only two viable sites, you know, sites that may support a viable facility, but unfortunately, they don't meet the objective.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Through the chair. I'm anxious to get to the public hearing, but I have to say that it's very distressing that there was not the proposal to put a separate new pole on the perimeter of Grundy Park. Because that clearly would have met what you're looking for in terms of coverage. And it would be very, very, very much less in the public view. Matter of fact, the one pole that you rejected because of the PG&E configuration, you can hardly see that pole. There's so many trees around it. So if you had put a, so was there a particular reason you didn't consider a proposal to put a new pole there?
We felt that the current design was less obtrusive than building a new pole in the park.
Oh, the current design of putting it on the right-on Park Avenue?
Correct.
I, I'm confounded trying to understand. I cannot understand that answer, but thank you. That'll be enough.
Also, just a point of reference for you, for you guys, for your, if it doesn't get continued, there is a city-owned lot about a half a block away from here that the pump station, that's-
Oh, yeah. Very close.
That's all screened off and everything, real good access, all paved access from two streets. So just, I mean, in case it does get continued.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So, firstly, one note of caution on this, which is, I think it's appropriate to direct the applicant to look at all viable, reasonable alternatives. And in a way, as Commissioner Mishra suggested, you have to leave it up to them to figure out which ones work for you both, work for them, both from a engineering standpoint, but for you, for you for aesthetic purposes. Where I'm going to say you need to be a little bit, be a little bit cautious is directing them to look at any publicly-owned facilities. It may be something that they decide that they want to explore, but the issue there is whether the city agrees to allow them to do it. And in all cases so far, the city has required a lease with payment. So what I'm concerned about is the commission not leaving the city open to an argument that the applicant could make, that you were directing the applicant to a city-owned facility in order to generate the revenue from that. Now, there are arguments out there that maybe, that some cities are making that maybe they have to when you're there in the public right-of-way. Those are not clear. But, so, I would just be a little bit cautious there.
Okay, through the chair. On that point, when I said, "Put it in Grundy Park," I don't necessarily mean in Grundy Park. It could be on the borderline between the park and the private residence. It could be in the private residence's backyard, or all in Grundy Park. All I'm saying is, that area is so heavily vegetated that I suspect no one would even object to your configuration of equipment that you're presenting here, because it'd be almost invisible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant, from the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Once again, I'll ask that same question. What reason, compelling reason is there that we should allow you to put something up that we've required everybody else to do something different? You know, we've required stealthing of everybody else. And you even say here in this report that it would work for that site. What compelling reason is there for us to allow you to do this when we've had to have everyone else to, you know, conform?
T-Mobile feels that this facility on, on the joint pole is a stealthed design that meets our coverage objective, the least obtrusive design for this coverage target area.
Thank you. Are there any other questions that we're going to?
Could we have a public hearing?
We could, if there's no more questions. The commissioner from the applicant. Okay, seeing none, I will now open up a public hearing. Anybody from the public, please, come up to the microphone, please state your name and your street.
Charles Pentprey's, 1413 Park Avenue. And when I'm looking at the pictures shown of the various places that T-Mobile had, had picked, it seemed to me that there wasn't any of them that didn't, that there was coverage, you know, missing everywhere, that they couldn't cover everything. They're going to be back next year for a few more of these poles. They're going to be back the year after that for a few, some more. This is going to go on and on, you know? If I can, if I can address two things. Exhibit H shows on the proposal, at 1439 Park Avenue, this humongous cabinet in the front, on somebody's front lawn. This is their, this is their alternative method to putting, putting their equipment on, on the pole.
Excuse me, sir. I want to locate Exhibit H. Give us a second here. Is it a color picture, or is it a drawing?
It's a, it's a proposal.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Towards the back of the package.
So this is the size of something that they're, that they're trying, their alternative to putting the equipment on the pole.
Oh, yeah.
In front of your house.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this thing's huge. It's higher than the fence next door. If, if they could move this back into the park, then they could put a cyclone fence around this thing to where, you know, the kids couldn't get at it. Fence it off and, and put a gate, a locked gate on it. I could be all right with that. That'd be hidden back there. But this thing here is ridiculous. Then their, their other comment was that they couldn't go above crossmembers on, on a telephone pole. But if you look at Exhibit G, they could do it in Atherton.
Yeah, but I think, just to answer your question, I believe that that configuration is where the pole is, they're talking about having the, what do we call those, the extensions, or whatever you want to-
Crossarms?
Crossarms. They're going the same direction versus having one going perpendicular and one going the other way, which makes it very difficult for anybody to climb up and over. If they're both going in the same direction, then it's not an issue for tech to climb up. If I'm not mistaken, is that? Just so that we, we understand where you're coming from. And you understand where, what they're referring to as far as the crossarms are concerned.
Well, you know...
I'm just trying to point out what, you know, what we're looking at.
PG&E very seldom climbs poles anymore. They're usually, they go up in a bucket now.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know, it's not something that's insurmountable.
Point of information, that's all.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would wish to comment on this item at this time?
I'm Bill Duff. I live at 591 Maple Avenue. And I just have a question for the applicant. How many of these poles are they going to put up? You're going to have one on Niles? You go less than a quarter of a mile and put another one up? I mean, how many more are they going to put up in San Bruno? They're, they're not that far apart from Niles down to Cherry Park, because you're only going over Genevieve. And then you don't even get to the next cross street, and you're putting up, and they're putting another one up. I'm just wondering, is there going to be a stop to this someplace? Or are they going to, you're going to have to keep coming in there all the time and, and talking about going before the planning commission to put up another one someplace else? So it's going to be, it's just an ongoing thing. And I was just, I'm just trying to figure out how many of these poles they anticipate putting.
I think we've asked that question. Well, that's a good question. And I don't think that we actually have a number, a solid answer on that. Is that correct, from the representatives of T-Mobile? We don't know?
Through the chair, I think their answer was they'd have to go back and check with the office.
Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to comment, comment on this? Okay, seeing none, closing this one. Bringing it back to the commission for discussion.
Just one quick question. I wasn't going to say anything on this one, but what is Exhibit H? Can I ask the applicant, I mean, why is it in this one package and not in the other package? Exhibit H is the blue one.
This was a request by staff for us to show what it would look like if we had proposed ground equipment, equipment on the ground rather than on the pole. And I believe for the 1736 Niles, there wasn't, the right-of-way was limited to the sidewalk. I believe that was the, the reason why we couldn't locate a cabinet. It would have to be on private property.
So you couldn't put the same-sized equipment that's on the pole on the ground?
No, that equipment is designed to be placed on, on, on poles.
So that same exact equipment, you couldn't just mount differently on the ground? It's got to be seven feet up in air. Maybe I should ask an engineer, one of the engineers. It's not fair to ask you. I'm sorry. I thought, I mean, I can't understand why you can't put seven feet of equipment there, but you can't put it on the ground? I mean, you're not just trying to make this picture look real bad so that the picture looks better?
No, we have equipment that we can put on the ground. It's smaller than the one in the picture, but it's not the one on the pole.
Okay, then why, why, why wasn't the smaller one? If we were asked to stealth it, to make it look better and look, you know, the best you can make it look, why would you take a bigger equipment and put it here?
Because it would require the same space. Like, the smaller equipment that we put on the ground, it will require the enclosure to provide the, the cooling and the interconnect units to be placed. So even if the equipment is smaller, but it will occupy the same space, that larger equipment is occupied.
But you just said you could put smaller equipment than what's in this picture?
The equipment itself is smaller, but it needs an enclosure to provide the, the cooling and the interconnect units as well.
Okay.
But the ones on the pole, it's designed to be that way.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the commissioners, from the commissioners?
Yeah, through the chair.
Commissioner Samut.
I'm just kind of curious about Grundy Park. I mean, it, just in terms of alternative site analysis, it looks as though Grundy Park would meet the requirements other than perhaps financial. I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting by reading this. None of the other sites meet your coverage, but that particular site does. And we didn't seem to have an alternative to choose from in this particular package. Can you tell me why?
Grundy Park is, you know, will meet the coverage objective. It requires a new pole with, with equipment on the ground. For that reason, we, it wasn't selected because we can utilize an existing pole with equipment on the pole. So that was a better, in T-Mobile's opinion, a better design than a new pole in Grundy Park.
Yeah, it would have been, it, from my perspective, it would have been nice, since this meets your service requirements, if you had given us some kind of analysis on this particular site as well, with maybe some mockups. We could take a look at that as an option, other than just stuff hanging on a pole in the street.
We, staff didn't request any of that information. I mean, we can certainly provide that information if you want.
Yeah, I would like to see it, sure. Thanks.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just have to take, make a comment when you indicate that staff didn't provide it. When a, when a project's being proposed and you want them to carry through, it would be my, as a professional, I would do everything possible to present everything I possibly can, to give options, to, to look at the whole picture. But when it feels like staff didn't ask for it, it feels a bit, a bit targeting. It feels a bit, you know, it's their responsibility to ask you those questions. I think the responsibility really falls on the applicant to be sure the project is moved forward in the very best possible way. So if you can just take that into consideration, I, I just needed to make that comment.
Understood.
Thank you. Any other, excuse me, any other questions, comments from the commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion that we deny a use permit 0924 with the staff to come back with the findings of the next planning commission meeting, as discussed, without prejudice.
So we have a motion for a denial. Could you restate that again, just so I'm perfectly clear on what that motion is?
It's a motion to deny the project without prejudice, with the findings to be brought to us at the next meeting.
Okay, there's the motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. I think we might need a-
Can we roll call here?
Thank you.
Commissioner Samut.
Uh, no. Or aye.
Aye. Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson.
No.
Chair Chase.
No.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra.
No.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we're back to square one.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I make a motion to continue this to March 16th meeting.
There's a motion to it. There we go. Motion and a second on the floor. You just want to do a roll call on this to make it easier on us?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask if the, if the motion maker would add that they put, that there be some analysis for the Grundy Park site as well.
Yeah, I'll take that amendment.
Okay, so the motion has been amended. Is there a second?
Through the chair. Before I let that go, I'd like to also add that the Grundy Park analysis include a pole with equipment in the air and, and on the ground, both alternatives.
Okay. So that's the motion of the individual, the commissioner who seconded that motion? Are they willing to second that?
Yes.
Thank you. So there's a motion, a second on the floor.
And we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
No.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Aye.
Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passes six-one.
Okay.
Item is continued until March 16th.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment that, on those bullet points that we're going to maybe give them, the, the five items. Just pretend like you're walking out your front door, and what would you want to see in front of your house? That's my, that's my whole argument to this whole thing. Just pretend like you're walking out your front door and living in a suburb of a big city, not a big city, in a suburb, what would you want in front of your house? Okay?
And, and through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like, I'd also like to make a comment to T-Mobile. This is, this motion, in my view, is an expression of interest to the commission in reaching a, an agreement with you. And when you do go to the side, take a look around, see if anything else comes to mind. I, I went completely around the housing in that area. And you might think of something that we didn't really talk about here tonight. I wasn't looking for a whole lot of ideas to come to mind when I was doing that, or I, I might've had some more. I thank you for your attention.
Yeah, I would like to, uh, thank you as well, I know it's been a arduous, uh, journey here, but I think everybody's got the focus of what we wanna do best for the community and, and allowing T-Mobile to have the coverage that, that they need as well, so, thank you very much. Okay, now we would want to item three. Residential design guidelines. Uh, we are to consider adoption of a resolution recommending the city council approve the residential design guidelines and adoption of a resident, of a resolution recommending the city council amend chapters twelve point eight four, twelve point nine six, twelve point one hundred, twelve point one oh eight, twelve point one sixteen, twelve point one twenty, twelve point one twenty-four, and twelve point two hundred of Title Twelve, land use of the San Bruno, San Bruno Municipal Code. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's a shame that this has to go after that, because that, that was obviously a tough task to get through, and this is something that the planning commission and, and we as staff is, is really excited about, because the residential design guidelines have something that I, since I've been here, they, here as I've been here, something that we've talked about, something that's been in motion for the last two and a half years, and something that's really important to the city of San Bruno. So it's a big accomplishment that the planning commission and the city council and staff that has got it here to this point. Um, so we're excited about it, and I'll, I'm starting to lose my voice just getting over a cold, so I'll keep my intro short. Uh, but the, uh, the, this process started about two and a half years ago. It got kicked off with the planning commission city council study session that provided the initial direction. We've been working with our consultant Larry Cannon, who's worked on a number of projects in San Bruno, um, on this. Uh, it went through four or five different subcommittee meetings, uh, that could, were part planning commission, part city council, that was a really good process that really helped us through this, and it's actually a process that we're gonna model other future planning efforts after, 'cause I think it really did work successfully. So the most recent, uh, action happened with the planning commission and the, uh, city council in a joint study session back in October, where a direction was given to the two staff to bring forward the, the guidelines. And there was also a direction given in the November planning commission meeting and November, November city council meeting related to the associated code revisions. So based on that recommendation and based on the entire process, you have the residential design guidelines in front of you. Uh, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura, who will present, uh, present, basically present what changes have been made since the last time you saw it, and a brief background on some of the code changes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. And please let me know if you can't hear me very well, I'm not used to sitting down here at the table. Um, I'd like to highlight some of the changes in the guidelines since your last review, and then we'll talk about some of the municipal code changes. Um, again, highlighting the things that have changed, or, um, we kind of had to update since we talked about it last, and then a little bit about the implementation of the guidelines. Um, so as you know, the details of those changes since the last draft were included in your staff report and also distributed to you, um, with the guidelines, so I hope you've had a chance to review those. I would like to hit on some of the major changes, and then if you had any follow-up questions on those things at the end, of course, we'd be happy to take them. Um, one of the major comments that went through the process and kind of lingered until the end was really clarifying what was required versus what was recommended. Um, so staff thought about this quite a bit, um, and in conjunction with Larry Cannon, we did update the introduction and really strengthen some of that text. Um, and specifically, we wanted to say that the exterior changes, um, if they require a building permit, those things must be consistent with the basic design principles. So we really simplified that language in the introduction to try to make that more explicit and clear. Um, and the majority of the guidelines after that are really intended to help homeowners and architects and designers to comply with those basic principles. And so the principles come first and they are required. Everything else is really supporting and the details and the information to help people achieve those. So we've tried to outline that, um, more clearly in the introduction. We've also tried to clarify what are the actual requirements, and we've done that by going through the document and adding municipal code citations, um, so that people can easily find the regulations in the municipal code, and will also then be grounded to the code, as kind of a constant reminder, as Commissioner Peterson had suggested, um, that many of these things are requirements, and they really must implement those things. Then they'll be able to go back, they're kind of cross-references. So in parentheses throughout the document, we've supplied those, um, references to the municipal code. Um, the second significant change is related to the photographs. Um, we got some feedback from the city council and the planning commission that some of the pictures didn't really ring true. It didn't look like San Bruno to us. Um, so we did update quite a few of the pictures, um, and made some of those selections more representative of the community, um, and throughout the document, as well as in the back of the examples of the small lot development potential. So I think it does look more like, um, the city than it did, did before. Um, we also, of course, took out the picture that was a negative example, um, as you had requested. Um, as you know, we reviewed several options for front yard landscaping, and there was quite a bit of discussion about this. Really, this was some of the focus of the discussion with the city council, as well as, um, with the planning commission. And so in the guidelines themselves, there are two new recommendations that have been added, um, and some improvement on the language based on that direction that we got from you. Specifically, um, and I think this is on page thirty-six, if you're following along, drought-resistant landscaping is specifically, um, recommended. Water-conserving automatic irrigation systems are specifically recommended. And this is to address that concern that just sprinklers that turn on every morning are not necessarily best, but they can be easily implemented now to conserve water. Um, also, a new recommendation to say that landscaping designs that specifically conserve water are recommended, but we've asked people to talk to staff about it in advance. And that's because this is really an evolving area, um, out, out in the world, and certainly here in San Bruno. What's appropriate zero-scaping, we need to work with people on that and develop designs. Um, and so that's why that language was included. Um, also to let you know, we got some feedback from the city council about wanting a little bit more information about landscaping. And so staff is working on some additional landscaping recommendations to help homeowner, homeowners with actual plant selections and things that would conserve water, and so we are working on that now. And we're gonna, um, kind of insert those materials into the document before it goes to city council. But we expect that to be a couple of recommendations on plants, some photographs, um, and a reminder of what the tree options are that are already included, um, from our parks department, what trees we already recommend. So again, reinforcing that idea that this is a great starting point document, that for a single family or two-family home, this is what you start with first, and it points you, um, in all the right directions. Um, but since that was a little bit, uh, late recommendation in the process, we are still developing that, and will be inserted into the document, uh, for city council review. Um, we are also very pleased to have added a new appendix C, Quick Fixes. Um, this is really, the idea behind this was homeowners that wanna make a difference, but they don't know where to start, or they can't picture what some of these things may look like on their home. So this is a collection of relatively small changes and some before and after pictures to help inspire homeowners, kind of what they can achieve and how the small details make a difference. And so this is a completely new, um, section. Um, so moving on to the municipal code revisions, um, as you know, we've been working on these kind of hand-in-hand along the way. Um, since you've seen it last, we've actually developed the language in conjunction with the city attorney's office. Um, we talked about code revisions related to implementation, um, of the design guidelines and related to parking. And so those are very consistent with what you reviewed previously. Um, most notably, we would be adding a finding of fact to all the discretionary planning approvals, so that, um, you, the commission, would decide that the project is consistent with the residential design guidelines for projects that require a building permit, but not a discretionary review by you. Um, the staff would be implementing the residential design guidelines with the authority of the community development director. So that's kind of a summary of those changes, and as you know, we've discussed allowing, um, small houses on substandard lots with a one-car garage with a use permit. And so we have before you also the code amendments related to that, which we've discussed, um, in the past as well. So I do wanna draw your attention a little bit more to the amendments related to landscaping, because this, um, was an item of discussion as we went through. So there was thoughts about when should we require landscaping, um, you had a little bit differing opinions. We got some feedback from the attorney's office as well. And so what we have before you, um, is that the impervious surface, so the actual paved hard, hard surface that water wouldn't go through, um, would be limited in the front setback to sixty percent. Um, that's what's in the guidelines, and so that's the proposal for the code amendment. So that addresses that, we don't want the whole front yard paved value that we've had that has not been really clear in our municipal code before. Um, we've written in an exception for substandard lots, because we recognize that on a narrow lot, just the required driveway and the walkway are gonna take up a, a significant portion of that. Um, so substandard lots, um, would be at the discretion of the community development director. In regards to the landscaping, then, um, what we have in the, in the proposed ordinance is that the front yard landscaping would be required when there's an increase in floor area or construction of a new house. And so that's based on some of the feedback that we got from you. We were looking for an appropriate trigger that would be reasonable and legally sound, and something that we could implement. And so that's what we have, um, in this, in this proposal before you. Um, as you know, through this process, we've also identified, um, some things in the code that we didn't think warranted, um, change right now, just to implement the residential design guidelines, but some really good thought went into some of those things, and staff does have the notes on that, and we'll be including that, um, in the comprehensive zoning code update that's getting going right now. So a lot of those comments that you've suggested to us along the way, we have notes on those, and we will be thinking about those as well. So you'll be seeing a lot of those things again. Um, so to kind of summarize what's in front of you tonight, there are two resolutions. Um, one is for the design guidelines, and the other is for the ordinance to amend the code. So both of these, um, are recommendations up to the city council. So if you pass these resolutions, then the guidelines and the ordinance would go to the city council. Um, the ordinance has to be heard by the city council two times, um, since it's a municipal code change, and then it takes thirty days for it to become effective. So based on the schedule that we have right now, staff would anticipate that the guidelines and the code amendments would go into effect, um, the middle or the end of April, in order to meet, um, those legal requirements. So in terms of implementation, um, what staff anticipates, um, doing is really taking that time as we go through that process um, to do the staff training that we need to, to ensure consistency with our front counter staff and with planners, to make sure that we have a good awareness of what the requirements are going to be. Um, and then, once we have approval of the document, we really would like to do quite a bit of outreach to our designers and architects that have done projects recently, um, so that's easily accessible to us in our, in our database. We'd be notifying them, and if they are interested as well, um, uh, doing a workshop, inviting them down, going over the document, and giving them a chance to ask any questions, um, since it would be a little bit change in the process and a new, a new place for them to look, um, to see what our expectations are. Um, as we're implementing this, um, as you know, planning staff has been doing, um, final inspections um, on all of the discretionary approvals that you approved. We would anticipate doing additional planning inspections, especially as we are getting this process started. Um, we've also had great success with pre-construction meetings, so we'll be doing additional pre-construction meetings, again, especially as we get started, and, um, planners, we've been working very well with our building inspectors and very closely, and we've really had a good increase, um, in the cooperation there, and I think very positive results. And so we'll be continuing that as we implement the residential design guidelines to make sure that all of those details actually get implemented. Um, so I think that wraps it up for our presentation, um, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall?
Not to be nitpicky, but on page seventy-one of the book, the very last picture, where it has a French fence, aren't there some streets in San Bruno that it's, it's not the code to put a fence, a front fence, uh, right on the property line? Shouldn't we put like a little parentheses to meet set, uh, city setbacks or something like that, just so people don't get the wrong idea?
True, it, it would have to be on an exterior side yard, but we could add a bracket there.
Yeah, just to meet, to meet city setbacks.
Okay.
And, or, 'cause I know some city, some streets, you have to be three feet back, some streets can be right on, on the property.
Correct.
Through the chair. Couple of comments, um. I have a suggestion for the, um, for the plants. There are various parks and other recreational areas that we have in the, in the vicinity that have, on their websites, plant listings of what their zero-scaping is. Maybe it would be better to identify those, or, and there's an additional, um, information to direct to those websites, because then you, Dallas will be updating and adding to their collection of what is actually zero-scaping in this area. Uh, that's one. The second is, uh, Laura, I mentioned this to you in the beginning, about taking any, mentioning of any addresses or any specific information from the, um, the examples. Hey, I saw that there's a civil engineer or engineers' information plus the house, um, address that should probably be taken, taken off from the example. The third one was, um, I had just had a, a question about, I, I just went to the seminar about pavers and, uh, about the fact that there are pavers out there that manufacturers are making at this point, that would be considered, uh, providing ample, um, water absorption on the site, but they're so closely spaced that it's ADA accessible. And how does the city plan to deal with those, with those, um, you know, minor product, I guess, if, I guess, would product information be enough to satisfy the city in that respect for the eighty percent, I guess, is one question.
Um, I have two thoughts about that. I think the first is, um, the comprehensive zoning code update includes a very detailed sustainability audit that is going into quite a bit of detail about a lot of sustainability topics, and providing us an opportunity to bring in best practices. So I think that this code language will be sufficient for now, knowing we'll have updated code language relatively quickly, and these products are fairly new and coming online.
Right.
Um, I would also say that we will be inclined to use the language and the standards that are in our regional and PDES stormwater permit, so that we are using the same calculations, um, that, you know, the regional water board is using, so that we won't be duplicating calculations or doing math a different way. Um, but those are the things we're gonna be talking about through the update.
And my last question was, uh, I didn't hear anything about feedback as time goes on and we make, you know, we hear comments, et cetera. Is there a process for feedback, or at this point, it's up to the city council to decide?
Um, celebrate that it's done and talk about it next week.
All right.
I, I think certainly, um, we're gonna have to revisit, um, through the zoning code update process, if nothing else, for text edits and then minor updates. Um, so I, I think we, we will certainly look at it at that point, and then the question will be, how quickly is the community changing, and are the community expectations changing?
Well, the, my question was, because it is so close to being approved, that if the city council or the planning commission was thinking of a feedback or loop, method, methodology, that it'd be included at this, at this point, because it'll be difficult to do it later on, just as an FYI.
So the follow-up question would be, um, what seems like a reasonable amount of time to do a report to the planning commission? Um, something we could bring back to you and say, this is what we've been doing and this is how it's been going.
Or my, my actual, actual, the comment arises from, if the public comes back and says, something in this doesn't work for us, that there be a feedback and say, how do we, how do we bring that up and incorporate that? Or make it part of the discussion?
In the beginning, um, in the beginning of this document, we say, for, uh, for questions or assistance, please contact, I mean, you could add, you could add some type of statement in there, or feedback on how to make this document more usable, or something along those lines.
Something along those lines.
And they would, in, in the real world, how it would work is that they would tell Laura, they would tell Matt, hey, I don't like this part of the document, and we'd explain why, and then eventually would take that feedback and revise the document if those were valid concerns, but if we wanted just to add that statement to that line here.
I, I would prefer that, then it leaves an open-ended invitation.
Any other, uh, comments?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Samut?
Yeah, I, I would just like to congratulate Larry and, and staff on a, what I think's a great document. This is a great point for the city, I wish other cities would do this, this type of thing. It's, it's one... It's, it's wonderful. It's, it, it's great.
I would second that.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I, I agree. It's a, there was an awful lot of work on it and the consultants certainly had to corral all the comments together, which was a big task. I have a question about the, page eight, the one you said is a requirement, it said these design principles should be followed. So, that to me means sort of a conditional, approximately required statement. And what, I, I should preface this, but the way I'm thinking is, I imagine the, the people who want to get what they want, whether it meets this or not, if they don't, can't determine what is required and what is, they, you wish you had it, you're not gonna get, you're gonna have a problem with that.
I agree. We call it a requirement on an earlier portion of the document, so we should change that should to a shall.
Okay. Then the next thing is that this contains a tremendous amount of zoning ordinance and municipal code. Are you representing that this contains all the zoning and municipal code that you need to do a, a conditional use permit, for example?
No. I mean, it, it has it all as it relates to design of your home, but there's gonna be other code references that you would have to go to throughout a use permit process. Yeah, and it, it explains that on page five.
Okay.
But, but I can add this. As we're doing our zoning code update, we're gonna frame our zoning code in a way that it relates to this. So, if someone picks up the new zoning code, they'll be able to pick it up and realize what they have to do to do in addition. And one component of that will be the residential design guidelines. So, while this won't be all inclusive of all the zoning code, the zoning code itself will be inclusive of the residential design guidelines and someone who's following that and picking up a project will know to come to this for the design aspects of their project.
Very good. I guess I was trying to understand what, how the, if a resident reads this and thinks this is all the rules, should they be cautioned to get a copy of the zoning code? Would that be enough?
Well, we, we do mention it in here, we could strengthen the language some, but I think it is amply covered in here and it will be covered with front counter staff talking to someone who's, is at the front counter and it will be covered within the zoning code.
Okay. Just lastly on that, if that's the, if that's what it takes, maybe it could be another document that looks like residential guidelines, part two, the zoning code. So, if you want, once someone leaves the counter, they can have some reason to feel they have all the requirements.
I agree and I think there should also be some type of online for, you know, some, something online where you could get everything within one screen.
Right. But without, I mean, I have a lot of stuff on screen, when I really want to work with it, I print it. Okay, the, the second, second comment is I'm really impressed to see the submittal guy, submittal examples in here. I, I hope this is as much a help to applicants as I think it would be because I've been hearing about it from them for a long time. And then lastly, you say during the month of April, staff will conduct outreach to architects and designers who have submitted applications to notify them about the guidelines. I was thinking it would have been nice to do that before it went to the council because if you find anything really significant in that process, it'd be nice to fix it ahead of time, but...
Architects were involved early on in the process. We interviewed architects early on in the process, so they, it was a, it was a process that did include architects and designers that have worked on applications in San Bruno.
I'm smiling because I'm thinking some of them were simply either staff or commission members.
There was, there was more than that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one last comment?
Certainly. Go, go.
From me. I just wanted to extend my gratitude that it, it is a document which I envisioned in the beginning and when I was given out my requirements of long, long read list of requirements, that it is printable, it is something that someone can print at home, which is great. And I, and I do enjoy the aspect that it is not a document where, and it's happened to me, where a client comes and says, oh, look at this one, that's what they want, so draw me that one. And it's not a document that says that. It's a document that gives a lot of variety, a lot of insight to what the city intends to do with the, with the project, which is, which is what I, what I was looking for. So, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions by the commissioners?
Do we have to, through the chair, do we have to do these resolutions one at a time?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I move that the commission adopt resolution twenty ten dash one.
Okay. Okay, there is a motion. Any second on the floor to adopt resolution number twenty ten dash one, and there is a question?
No, there's a second.
Oh. I think there already was a second. It's gonna be a roll call vote, correct?
Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Aye.
Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, that's one of them.
Okay, through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I move the commission adopt resolution number twenty ten dash two.
Correct. Got a motion and a second.
Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Aye.
Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passes. And before, before we close, I'd also like to thank Larry, he's been awesome, working with him on this document for the past three years and I think he's, he's done a great job.
He did do a great job, everybody did a great job.
Yeah. It just shows the amount of detail that went into the document.
That's right. Okay, well, let's see, shoot, in all this confusion, all this fun, I lost the agenda, there we go. All right, next item, discussion. Is there anything left to discuss?
Before I talk down.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll close that. Next thing is city staff discussion, really, I mean, who's gonna go on architectural review committee, right?
Yes, do we have volunteers? March eleventh.
I'm in.
All right, Commissioner, we had Samut, Commissioner Mishra, Commissioner Biassadi with three first and we have backup on Peterson.
Well, will T-Mobile be there?
I don't think so. Maybe.
All right. Is there anything else? Oh, yeah. Is there any other discussion on anything? No? Well, then in that case, let this thing end today, we're over.